Vice President King. And President Lavelle.
Here.
A quorum is not present. Let the record reflect that General Superintendent and CEO Michael Kelly is also in attendance.
Thank you. This meeting will come to order. What we will do is reorder the agenda until we have another Commissioner President present. So what we will do is go to the section for excellence in the parks, acknowledging excellence. Could we do that, please? And then we'll go back to the business of the meeting when we are joined by another Commissioner.
Yes, absolutely. And Jimmy, if you would please put the presentation up on the screen.
Good afternoon, Board of Commissioners, Superintendent Kelly. I'm Alonzo Williams. I'm the Chief Program Officer with the Chicago Park District. And I am here to give a update of how summer 2021 went. So if we can go on with our presentation, next slide, please. So day camp, as you guys can tell, we had day camp both indoors and outdoors this year's. We had roughly forty seven thousand kids total in our summer programs this season. Uh, we had uh over twenty thousand kids in our traditional, I'm sorry, in our, in our camps and over eleven thousand kids in our traditional day camp programs. So we are back to business here at the Parks District. Next slide, please. Here's just a listing of some of the programs that we offered. Again, as I stated, uh both outdoors, uh indoors, as well as our outdoor facilities, as well as our other recreation centers are up and running. And uh even Tim King can have an opportunity of beating somebody in pickleball. It's only three hundred and forty nine people were enrolled. So Tim, you have an opportunity to dominate somewhere. Next slide, please. Summer food, summer food is always important. Uh, if you guys recall, when CPS doing COVID, they were actually out giving food away to families and kids. Well, we actually had a great summer this year. We're giving out meals to kids at roughly a hundred and ninety location. We provided more than eleven thousand uh campers meals to a tune of almost a half a million meals. We do plan on continue to do our summer meals for the fall. And we're just in the process of working with both the buildings, uh the building department as well as the fire department to vet our facilities to continue that program. TIP Fest, Teens in the Park festivals. So we've already started these, uh as you can tell, and uh we've had at least two auditions already, both at Amundson Park and the Midway Plaza in July. We had over fifty kids in attendance. We even had some kids from not Chicago, as far as New York, Kankakee and Skokie. But obviously, we allowed everyone to audition, but in order to make the finals, you actually have to be a city resident. As well as you can see, we've had uh hundreds of kids participate. And we are looking forward to our sixth annual TIP Fest is uh coming up on Saturday, October the second at Union Park. We'd love for people to come out for that. And now we'll close out that program. Something very interesting that uh we would love for you all to accompany us at is our teen centers. Superintendent Kelly gave us this mission. Uh, I can recall a couple of years ago, we visited some boys and girls clubs. And one of the things we don't do is allow our teens to kind of hang out. A lot of things at parks are very programmed. Well, Superintendent Kelly uh missioned us to come up with an opportunity for teens to just hang out. And as you can see by this, uh Washington Park, Kennebec Park, Robishaw Park, and Hamilton Park are our four newest teen centers that are ready to roll. And we will be having a ribbon cutting that's coming out soon. So I wanted everyone to be aware of that. Summer Kickback Series. Summer Kickback Series was a new event that we uh came up with. We were giving uh a lot of dollars by unnamed of a donor. And we had roughly fifteen communities that we targeted. Those fifteen communities were primarily South Side and West Side. Those are some of the, those are many of the same communities were, that were targeted by the mayor's office. And we really did our thing by partnering with fifteen community entities to come up with an eight week series. These themed uh parties that we had every Friday really turned out cool. Not sure if some of you guys saw it on TV. But there was a water balloon fight between the kids and the police that actually made the news. But we had many, many other activities out. We were able to employ uh more than a hundred and fifty kids, as well as roughly twenty five adults. And that program just ended August twenty seventh. Uh, we even had another uh sponsor who was Amazon, who gave us three hundred thousand dollars towards the program to make these events happen. Rolling Rec. Rolling Rec was one of our premier programs we've been doing for the last couple of years. This is where we go into unstaffed locations and do roughly sixty minutes of physical activities twice a week. This is our fifth uh season, and we've been able to service more than fifteen hundred uh young people. Next slide. Rolling Rec on the block. So this is Rolling Rec taking it directly to the streets. So this is our opportunity to work with the mayor's office, uh the Chicago Police, and many other sister agencies to physically come to a block and set up shop. We started this last year during COVID, and I'm proud to say that we've increased by roughly a fourth. So we're up at roughly seven hundred uh community participants at this program. And with the success we've had this summer, we're going to continue this deep into October. Aquatics. What would be summer without our wonderful aquatic program? So we were able to keep all of our beaches open for our scheduled time, Memorial Day to Labor Day. And let me state, this is with a national shortage of lifeguards that we were still able to facilitate and have both our beaches as well as our pools open. Next slide. Uh, again, back to those uh agencies where a lot of other our uh colleagues, other, in other places throughout the country are not able to facilitate and have their uh locations open. And the great thing about our lifeguards, they are uh first responders. And we had ten rescues this summer. Uh, one to really speak of, we had about nine people rescued from Oak Street where a boat capsized. And if not for our lifeguards there, that could have really turned out bad. So a lot of kudos to those guys doing their jobs this summer. Valor Games. We can't forget about our special, uh, our, our special rec division, but Valor Games has come up. Uh, we are focusing on that for August, uh, we focused on that for August seventeenth through August nineteenth. As usual, at Soldier Field, we had roughly about fifty participants for all over the Midwest and even some from down south. And uh we look forward to continuing Valor Games. I think we got a couple of pictures of some of the cool things that they did there from archery, shot putting, indoor rowing, table tennis, and even powerlifting. Next slide, please. Now here's a very unique program that really kicked us off in the summer was the Chicago Fastest Kid. Not sure if you can see, well, first of all, the young lady who uh attends Limbloom Academy, who we will definitely probably see in the Olympics. That's the picture. You see her crossing the finish line. She kind of was flying. Uh, there's a picture. We also had uh Jackie Joyner-Kersey come out. She's between the mayor and the first lady. As well as, this is a great program that the, the seed actually came from Reverend Jackson. And the mayor superintendent allowed us to push that forward. And we had uh roughly two divisions. We had three hundred kids participate in the track experience. That was for the younger kids to truly get the entire uh experience of doing track based activities, as well as we actually had the competition for the older kids. So that uh fifth, all the way up to twelfth grade, that's a correction, but we had roughly about six hundred kids participate in that. Next slide, please. In summary, overall, the Chicago Park District had a very successful summer within this COVID world. Uh, and through all these challenges that we had with COVID, we were still able to successfully program a, and have wonderful events through our community. Uh, I want to really give a special shout out to our park district staff, our community members, our partners, and all the other organizations that helped curate a successful summer. Any questions?
Alonzo, I think, you know, summer is so vibrant for the park system. But I also think it's important to point out that there are so many community organizations and sports organizations that utilize the parks that are outside of the park system. And if you just take Horner Park, Humboldt Park, Wells Park, Hamlin Park, you have thousands of children playing softball and sports and programs that are run by those organizations that are still using our facilities and using our stuff. And so there's there's a whole, a whole cadre of other kids, thousands and thousands of them using the park. In addition to the fifty thousand, we're serving through the park program. I just think it's important to point that out.
Yes, yes, thank you.
I just want to say that you all have done an extraordinary job under tremendous. It has been a difficult couple of years for the Chicago Park District and for every park district, actually. And um the uncertainty with which you all were operating just not knowing how to do this because nobody really knew how to do this. You were creative and you were responsive and you uh did a lot to fill a gap that really was critical to be filled so that parents could go to work and build a level of confidence that their kids were someplace safe. So I just want to say thank you to you and your staff for everything that you were able to do over the course of this year.
Thank you, President.
Yeah, please let the record reflect that Commissioner Netski has joined the meeting. Quorum is now present.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Okay, so we can go back a little bit. We have one thing that we need to do right before we uh and that is to uh appoint a trustee to the Park Employees Annuity and Benefit Fund of Chicago. Per Illinois Statute forty, Illinois CS five twelve one fifty six of the Illinois Pension Code, three members of the board are appointed by the Park District Board. So can we take nominations, please?
I'd like to nominate Ceci Prado. Uh, she's done a wonderful job for us over the years and uh um, you know, it, it, it's, we're, it's an exciting time with the recent passage of the legislation and signed by the governor that we're finally going to get our pension back on the right track. Um, and you know, it, it's, it's long overdue that we're reinvesting in our commitment to our employees. So I nominate Ceci.
Okay, is there a second? Am I allowed to second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Cecilia Prado will serve on the Park Employees Annuity and Benefit Fund of Chicago for a term of three years. Congratulations. Um, and before we move forward, just for the record, we are deferring um the first item on the agenda, resolution honoring Commissioner Coldak.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is approval of the meeting minutes from the regular board meeting held July sixteenth, twenty twenty one. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, thank you. Will the secretary please take a roll call for the adoption of this matter?
I sure will. Commissioner Coldak?
Aye.
Commissioner Edwards?
Aye.
Commissioner Netski?
Aye.
And President Lavelle?
Aye.
Motion carried and the minutes are adopted.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, we've already heard acknowledging excellence and under presentations from the departments, there's nothing to present. Under communications and reports, there's a statement on uh lakefront safety.
Thank you, uh President Lavelle. Good morning, Superintendent Kelly, uh members of the board. I'm Tim King, General Counsel. And we'll, I'll be making a brief statement on lakefront safety and introducing two uh guest speakers who will also make brief statements. As a result of increase, of an increase in park patrons attempting to swim in not safe to swim locations along the lakefront and some associated public sentiment to mitigate that risk, the Chicago Park District is recommending the following measures. Number one, increased signage. In a few recent incidents, signage has been ignored and not followed. CPD is refreshing, enhancing, repainting, refixing signage in not safe to swim locations where incidents have occurred. In many cases, that's already been done. Number two, community outreach and partnership. We are partnering with local elected officials, public schools, and private upon request, and community groups which will have access to materials explaining the, the swimming flag system, our hours, rules, regulations for swimming. Also, lifeguard recruitment, because there's a national shortage, as Alonzo mentioned, and lifeguard training and other related information, aquatic based information, which will be shared with the public. Panfleeting materials will be available upon request, and that will also be up on our website. Number three, rules, locations, and e-awareness acknowledgement upon program registration. Regardless of the CPD program, whenever a participant registers online or in program, or in person for a program, the participant will be asked to review and acknowledge their receipt and viewing of a list of safe to swim locations and lakefront rules and regulations, including hours of operations. For a pilot program to add life rings to several locations along the lakefront in existing safe to swim, safe to swim locations to, we are doing this to assess effectiveness and feasibility and determine if further course of action will be followed. Safety devices will be used in conject, in conjunction with an alarm system that will trigger an alarm on a smartphone app used by CPD personnels if those, it used by CPD personnel if those lifesaving devices are removed. That is for maintenance and um operational purposes. It's not, it's not a real time safety measure. And finally, at certain locations, it's been determined, we are in the process of determining that we are restricting access entirely with barriers at some higher risk areas. This may include piers. And uh we would be declaring those areas completely off limits to the general public. Such areas as determined by the park district will only be accessed by authorized personnel. So those are the measures we are taking. We expect those measures to be up and running by the beach season twenty twenty two. And um we are working aggressively. At that point, at this point, I would like to uh introduce two guest speakers that we've been working with. Uh, professionals respected in the industry. Uh, we have Gary Dworkin. Gary is from Life Saving Resources Incorporated. Gary is a consultant on uh, and a expert witness in over three hundred and fifty drowning and aquatic litigations, uh litigation cases nationwide. He's uh been doing this for forty five plus years. And um he's been published in several magazines, Journal of American Medical Services, Fire Chief Magazine, Parks and Recreational Magazine. He is a frequent contributor. And after Gary makes a statement, we also uh are joined by a distinguished professor of law at Northwestern University Prisker School of Law, Mr. Nadav Shokid. He's been on a faculty at Northwestern Law since twenty twelve. And um his, his work focuses on local government law and American legal history. So with that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Dworkin and Professor Shokid. Thank you.
Good afternoon. This is Jerry Dworkin. Uh, for some reason, we can't get my camera working. I'm hoping you can hear me?
Yes.
Loud and clear, good.
Great. I've been in communication with George on a number of occasions regarding the life ring or life station, uh lifesafety stations along the beaches and such. Um, the biggest concern I have about ring buoys as an example is that, number one, uh, the general public typically cannot throw a ring buoy accurately or within a distance. That the accuracy and effectiveness of a ring buoy is typically fifteen to thirty feet. If ring buoys are going to be established along the beachfront, recommend that they be in a stuffed bag so that the line doesn't tangle. And if the ring buoy can be thrown, the line would feed out of the stuffed bag. But at the same time, the ring buoy can be used without the entanglement issue of the line if that line's contained within that stuffed bag. Uh, my concern about ring buoys is that when they're put out in a open beachfront area, that there's always a chance of vandalism, which has occurred in every location that I've looked at where these types of stations have been established. Uh, secondly, we don't want to give the public the, the idea that it's uh safe to swim in this area because there's a ring buoy and uh this rescue station is there. Again, the effectiveness of the ring buoy is, is really questionable in terms of a throwing device. If they're placed in a uh guarded area where there are lifeguards present, the lifeguards are not going to use that equipment. They have other pieces of equipment readily available to them that they are trained in and uh effectively use on a regular basis. Uh, but if ring buoys are going to be used, again, the, the important consideration is that the best and most effective use of a ring buoy is when it's dropped from a elevation down to a victim uh where a distance is not an issue. And typically, if you have somebody who falls off a pier, trips off a pier, they're in close proximity to the pier, and that's where a ring buoy is affected. But to have it from a beach, it's uh very difficult to deploy, uh very difficult to manage, and I think it may give people a false sense of security.
Thank, thank you, Gary. And uh if Professor Sh, uh Shokid could please um introduce himself. Thank, thank you, Gary. And if Professor Shokid could please introduce himself.
Hi, everyone. So I'm Nadav Shokid. I'm coming from Northwestern. And I'd also like to comment on the issue of the life ring stations. And like Mr. Dworkin, I have some sort of concerns about it. Obviously, those are legal concerns, only make two brief points. So the first point, which is arguably the most obvious legal problem, is that the placement of these stations will render the district vulnerable to a lot of legal liability. Probably, given the way current Illinois law works, both the statute and the court and Supreme Court decisions here, it's highly likely that any resultant injury because of use or even misuse of those, of anything in those stations would generate liability for the, for, for the district. So I think that at a minimum, there should be more research to go, going into it to figure out maybe be some statutory change to extend the immunity or something like that. Because otherwise, the district might find itself spending millions of dollars on, on, on dealing with these lawsuits and basically wasting money on lawyers rather than actually on the people we all want to help. And the second point, which is maybe less legal, but arguably is more important, of course, it's not just about money. This is, this is about lives. And based on what we just also heard from Mr. Dworkin, it's kind of striking that there's not a lot of data or any data at all actually supporting the proposition that these stations could actually save lives. And if anything, there's quite a, quite a, a non-negligible risk that if anything, they put more lives in general. And that's basically a legal problem in that if, God forbid, there is, there is an accident with such a life station a few years from now, and a court has to decide whether the district is liable. If, if I'm a judge looking at this evidence, it's going to be easy for me to say, well, based on the evidence the board had at the time, there was no good reason to assume that this does not present a risk, and therefore, there was negligent behavior here. But beyond this legal risks, there's also just, again, the issue of just with perspective of overall policy. Is this really a risk that's worth taking before there's actual data showing that these mechanisms are likelier to save lives as, as opposed to much more troublingly, put lives, put lives at risk? So I think those are the both legal, but also to some extent, policy concerns that I think are involved here.
Thank you very much, Professor. And with that, that concludes that presentation. There's no action for the board to take on this matter. It's more of a update for everybody's information.
This is a pilot program that we are implementing. And we are examining the results of this at what point? Tim?
We are, well, everything but the lifeguard, everything but the locations of like life rings is in full progress now. All the signage, the, the increased signage, the outreach materials, the sign-off acknowledgement via IT on programming, and the, the restricted access to high-risk locations, all of that is in motion. What we are considering over the winter is which location or locations we would, as the, we would roll out for spring to put a, put additional lifesafety devices in. But those locations would only be existing safe to swim sanctioned locations.
And will it be for one season only for us to evaluate the efficacy of the effort?
That's yet to be determined, President. We're gonna, I think we, we, we're gonna use it as long, I mean, as long as it takes to determine whether or not there's there's a, if, if we should expand the program or keep it at its current level. So I, I think we kind of baby-step it into 2022 and see, see how, see how things go. With vandalism and maintenance being the biggest concern.
All right. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is the People in the Park section. Will the secretary please call the names of those who have signed up to speak?
As we have many speakers signed up to speak today, we ask that you please limit your comments to no more than two minutes. We also ask that those making comments before the board, please lower your electronic devices, including television, so that we may hear you clearly and do not experience any frequency interference. Once you are on the line, you will need to dial star six to unmute yourself. Our first speakers who have signed up to speak, all regarding Douglas Park. We have Rebecca Woolfram, who has supported, has submitted supporting documentation, which you may find in your packet. Susan Mullen, Bethany Kozak, and Rachel Azarello. And we'll get our first speaker on the line. Is this Rebecca? You'll need to unmute yourself. There you go. Hi, is this Rebecca? Rebecca, can you hear me? Yep, there you go. Hi, Rebecca.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You are live at the Chicago Park District Board Meeting. You may present your comments to the board now.
Thank you. Hello. Here at the Anna and Frederick Douglass Park, we just had the Summer Smash. And pretty soon, the Riot Fest will be here. It's not pretty, it's not nice, and people are getting sick of it. The arguments you make for why it's a good idea to put these festivals in our park always seem to boil down to two. It benefits the park and it benefits the community. Neither is true. We don't see Riot Fest making improvements to the park, and the money they pay does not come here. As for the community, have you asked people who live near the park or spend time there how they feel about it? Local businesses are also part of the community. Do they benefit? Have you asked them? We did ask them. You have a little survey there. And of course, the answer is no. The cruelest part of this, in my opinion, is how vendors who work at the sporting events in the park have been forced out along with the sports, essentially losing their jobs. You, on the board of the Park District, are the guardians of the public spaces in Chicago. The language of your mission statement and description of your core values stresses the needs of families and children. It stresses safe, inviting,
Thirty seconds remaining.
Beautifully maintained parks and facilities. It does not stress the desirability of making money by letting private businesses take over public parks and shut out the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. We will release you from the call at this time, and you may rejoin the meeting through the links provided. We'll get our next speaker on the phone. It's ringing. Is this Susan Mullen? You may need to unmute yourself. Please dial star six to unmute. There you go. Hi, is this Susan?
Hello?
Hi, is this Susan?
Yes.
Hi, good morning. You are live at the Chicago Park District Board Meeting. You may present your comments to the board now.
Thank you. Since 2015, our community has been demanding that for-profit music festivals be moved out of Douglas Park. To that end, we have collected a multitude of petition signatures. Since 2015, the number of weeks that we are barred from using the parks has more than doubled. During last month's Summer Smash Festival, a friend and I tried to walk on the walking track outside of the fence festival area, and were told by security that if we did, we would be arrested for trespass. Does this board believe in keeping public parks public? This is not a rhetorical question. I would like answers to all my questions. According to the Trust for Public Land 2021 report, 9% of Chicagoland is used for parks. The national average is 15%. Latino communities have 40% less park space than the city's average. Why is the Latino community on the south end of the park banned from using the park for much of the late summer and fall? Does the Park District rely on the money brought in by for-profit private events to keep their operational budget, to meet their, to meet their operational budget? What percentage of your total operating budget, excluding Northerly Island, do private concerts contribute to? According to your, your budget summary, major private grants, donations, and sponsorships make up 35% of outside funding. What, if any, money is donated to
Thirty seconds remaining.
Donated by private music festivals to the Park District? And what, if any, money is donated directly to Douglas Park? This board and Alderman Cardenas repeatedly assert that the festivals bring jobs and revenue to our communities. Our research suggests that that is not the case. Although assertions evidently
Ten seconds remaining.
Are merely wishfully, wishful thinking. Can you please share data with us that supports your claim? Thank you, and I look forward to your response.
Thank you, Susan. We will release you from the call now, and you may rejoin the meeting through the link provided. And we'll get our next speaker on the line.
Is our next speaker a Douglas Park speaker also?
Yes, we have two more. Good morning. Is this Bethany? You may need to dial star six to unmute yourself. There you go. Good morning, Bethany.
Hello, this is Bethany Kozak.
You may be, present, present your comments to the board now.
Okay, thank you. My name is Bethany Kozak, and I'm here to discuss the necessary halt of Riot Fest in Douglas Park on September 17th through 19th. Riot Fest, a majority-white-attended event with a majority-white artist lineup, taking place in a park named after black abolitionist Frederick and Anna Douglas, is ironic at best. At worst, Riot Fest can cause lives and negatively affect the functioning of two major hospitals surrounding the park, St. Anthony's and Mount Sinai. We know that the COVID-19 pandemic disproportionately affects our Black and Latinx neighbors. With emerging variants, it is as dangerous as ever to hold a major music festival. Mount Sinai is also only one of four Level One trauma centers in the city of Chicago. With over 45,000 projected attendees, Riot Fest will no doubt be a disturbance to current hospital patients, and heavy traffic can prevent timely emergency ambulance care to the hospitals. By holding Riot Fest in Douglas Park, the Chicago Park District chooses to actively promote racial health disparities of our Black and Latinx neighbors by using public space to prioritize public, private profit. This private profit event can slow service to these two major hospitals. City employees promoting this event must realize Riot Fest is exploiting Landale and Little Village neighborhoods for financial gain with little to no benefit for the surrounding community. This festival also blocks valuable and rare green space on the West Side by use of a literal paywall. I urge you to shut down Riot Fest in Douglas Park in the name of health and wellness of our Black and Latinx neighbors on the West Side. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will release you from the call now, and you may rejoin the meeting through the links provided.
Board members, I did ask in the chat if Juliet would reach out to the speakers afterwards on this issue. I would remind everyone that we do have the support of both Alderman Scott and Alderman Cardenas of this event. Nevertheless, we've heard this testimony in the past. We know it's an inconvenience to the community. We've, we've never shied away from that. But the revenue made from the event does go back into our programs and our mission with kids. And we've always tried to find a balance between increasing our services, maintaining low or free fees, and trying to do it with little or no taxes. And, and our record speaks for itself on that. That said, we are evaluating Riot Fest and all these festivals and what we're going to do in the future with them, because we do know they're an inconvenience. But the event will happen this September.
Okay, and we'll get our last speaker on this topic on the line, Rachel. And it's ringing? Hi, is this Rachel Azarello?
Hello.
Good morning, Rachel. You are live at the Chicago Park District Board Meeting. You may present your comments to the board now.
Thank you. Good afternoon, esteemed members of the Chicago Park District Board. My name is Rachel Azarello, and I live close to Douglas Park in Norris Landale. And I am here today with some of my neighbors for the same reasons the neighbors of Humble Park Band together against Riot Fest. We're tired of what we see as the continued privatization of a park that leaves it severely damaged and also limits its use for residents months after the festival. Add to Riot Fest Summer Smash, Lyrical Lemonade, or whatever else buys their way in, and we're talking half the summer. Sacramento is closed, and the parks are for minimally, for at least one week before and after these festivals. And parking becomes problematic with Alderman not having offered any solution to that for residents. And in fact, this digression, one Alderman's brother was making money off of it on a CPS property. It's not something offering free entry to residents within a quarter of a mile, nor temporarily, temporary minimum wage jobs mitigates effectively. The idea that it brings economic activity is also not a solid argument, since, one, concertgoers can't actually leave unless they're VIP. And, two, the people who attend have had Landale sold to them as a bad neighborhood, so the likelihood that they're going to go out exploring and checking out shops is, is untrue. Festivals like Riot Fest should not operate, should operate in venues that do not encroach on public land. And we propose that the Chicago Park District set up a permanent venue for such festivals like Northerly Island. And keep them out of residential neighborhoods, keep them out of the residential neighborhoods where the neighbors do not directly benefit from them. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Rachel. You may rejoin the meeting through the links provided. And we'll get our next three speakers on the line. Our next three speakers are Robert Fedoruk, Fernando Maji, and Louise McCurry. And it's ringing? Good morning. Is this Fernando? You may need to dial star six to unmute. There you go. Is this Fernando?
No, this is Robert Fedoruk.
Oh, my apologies. Good morning, Robert. You are live at the Chicago Park District Board Meeting. You may present your comments to the board now.
Thank you in advance for your time, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Robert Fedoruk. Our daughter attend, am I presenting? Can you guys hear me?
Yes. Please continue.
Our daughter attend, our daughter attended Jefferson Park Summer Camp, where she endured sadistic acts of humiliation, vis a vis the honesty game, wherein all girls of the group were forced to tell the other group girls in the group what they didn't like about them. My daughter was singled out for humiliation, not just by her peers, but by the camp counselors themselves. And when I say forced, I mean not just forced to endure the abuse of counselors and peers alike, but also forced to join in on this abuse. CPD did the right thing by firing these counselors, but beyond that, has attempted to sweep this under a rug. My wife and I reported this abuse, and the next day, my daughter's peers were talking about it on social media and SMS, singling out my daughter for further abuse for being the whistleblower. Somebody at CPD disclosed my daughter's identity to her abusers. It is my opinion that this board, who has been aware of this abuse the entire time, has shirked its responsibility to the childhood well-being of their camp, of their campers. First, by not protecting whistleblower status and protecting whistleblowers from their accusers, but also not immediately notifying parents
Thirty seconds remaining.
That their children, that their children had been forced to participate in this abuse. And that their abusers still have social media and SMS access to their children. And for this reason, in addition to other troubling scandals, including sexual harassment that CPD has struggled with this year, I call upon this board to immediately free budget for a third-party audit of its whistleblower and harassment reporting strategies. for a third-party audit of its whistleblower and harassment reporting strategies. I further request a vote of no confidence-
Please make your closing remarks.
-from Michael P. Kelly, Superintendent and CEO of Chicago Park District. Thank you for your time.
Board, I know this has been an issue that was reported to the Inspector General. It was an issue that was looked in by Heather Kyle and Alonzo Williams, and I know there has been conversations. Alonzo?
Yes, Mike, can you hear me?
Yes.
Mike, I reached out to the gentleman on the line on 9/1 at 1:33 PM directly, and I have not heard back from him. So I will reach out to this gentleman again to follow up. I think he had three more questions left. Multiple staff members in both the North Region as well as HR reached out to the gentleman. I will personally reach out to the gentleman again after this call.
I know that you guys have already terminated the two counselors that came into question, but will you please ensure for me and the board that you'll do a deep investigation, you'll use whatever resources necessary, and make sure this never happens again, and you tighten up whatever policies and procedures you need to do, as well as, of course, fold this into our ongoing investigation on the lifeguards if necessary?
Yes, Mike, that's not a problem, but I will address the board and yourself. We really have dug deep into this. The gentleman has been contacted and worked directly to-
It's not me, contact the parents. The parents deserve to know that their children were forced into this abuse. The parents deserve to know.
Again, sir, I reached out to you last Friday at 1:30-
The parents of the children that were forced to do the abuse. It's not just me. There's a whole cohort of children that were forced to participate, to be abusers.
All right, sir.
You need to tell their parents, too.
Sir, I will call you right after this meeting to get all of your comments and then follow back up with you again.
Thank you so much, Robert. We'll release you from the call now, and you may rejoin the meeting through the links provided.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll get our next speaker on the line, Fernando Maji. Good morning, Fernando. You may need to dial *6 to unmute yourself. Fernando, we still have you muted. If you would please dial *6 to unmute. There you go. Is this Fernando? Is this Fernando on the line?
Yes, it is.
Good morning. You are live at the Chicago Park District Board Meeting. You may present your comments to the board now.
Okay. Well, yes, I've heard of the latest stories of the drownings, and then I've heard that they tried to put Life Fest on the beach at Prince Beach. I think it should be thought of that people are exposing their lives. I mean, it's endangering them, so I think that it's necessary to consider, since also the Alderman Hayden and the 49th Ward agrees that it should be placed, Life Brings there, and also signage. So I think it's important to put there, to save lives. And hopefully, that's what happens and decided upon like that, because with false pride, we're way past false pride now. I mean, so I think that it's necessary, and I think that hopefully, even more measures are thought of. I mean, people have to be conscious about it and talk to each other about it, and there has to be consensus about what to do in those situations.
30 seconds remaining.
Okay, and there has to be education also, and it has to start in schools, it has to start in families, it has to start at workplaces, it has to be everywhere, basically, I think. And I think that another thing is that I was reading a quote, it says, "The test of a government is how popular, not how popular it is with the powerful and privileged view, but honestly, how fairly and honestly it deals with the many who must depend on it." So I think that that's an important thing now. And-
Thank you, Fernando. Please make your closing remarks.
Okay. Well, that was it, basically. And I think that also, including everything, government should be a model of inclusion by David Patterson, so everything should be consensus and hopefully-
Thank you.
Thank you, Fernando. We'll release you from the call now, and you may join the meeting through the links provided. And we'll get our next speaker on the phone, Louise McCurry. Please let the record reflect that Louise McCurry also submitted photos, which you Good morning, Louise. You may need to dial *6 to unmute. Louise, we have you on the line, but you are muted. You'll need to dial *6 to unmute yourself. Louise, if you can hear me, you need to dial *6 to unmute. Jimmy, let's release her, and I'll dial her from my phone, please.
Hello?
Hi, is this Louise McCurry? Do we have Louise on the line?
Hello?
Hi, Louise.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You are live at the Chicago Park District Board Meeting. You may present your comments to the board now.
Okay. So first of all, I just want to say a major thank you to Chicago Park District for repairing the services at the 67th Jeffrey Play Lot. It's now a wonderful play lot with rubberized, new rubberized surfaces, and new parent walls, so parents and children can actually have a dynamite time out there in the summer. Second, I want to talk about protecting the jewel of Chicago Park District, which is the Wooded Island and the Japanese Gardens in Jackson Park. During the Hamadi Festival, the Cherry Blossom Festival, 7,000 to 8,000 visitors per day come to the garden and come to the island. And during the regular weekend during the summers, we have 1,000 to 2,000 visitors a day coming to visit. So it's a truly wonderful place that attracts families and children from every neighborhood in Chicago. We hear every language, every costume, visiting the garden. It's a place that families can come one-to-one with nature, can celebrate being out in a green space, and can appreciate the beauty of the Wooded Island. The difficulty is that if you want to visit the island and see the butterflies and the turtles and the fish and the chipmunks and birds, you first have to get by the areas where there's been extensive vandalism. I put in your pack, put in your information, the pictures of all the vandalism of the island and in the garden. Essentially, the vandalism threatens the stability of the island. So we've tried to add extra security, we have extra volunteers out walk the island every day to try to prevent vandalism, but none of that's been really effective.
30 seconds remaining.
We have motorcycles that run through the island, we have motorcycles that run through the garden, we have motorcycles that knock down pieces of the garden wall, we have people that are stealing the turtles and stealing the fish, we have people that are damaging the butterfly havens, we have folks that are actually graffitiing all the sacred rocks in the garden, we have folks that are graffitiing and destroying the signs on the island. In general, it's become a place-
Please make your closing remarks.
-that most kinds of new damage. So we would like to have gates up that would reinforce the dawn, dark to dawn purview, which allows the plants and the birds to recover, and allows the animals to have some time away from human contact, and allows it to actually keep the area beautiful for families to come to visit. Thank you so much for the time, and thank you for everything you're doing for the parks.
Thank you so much, Louise. We'll release you from the call, and you may rejoin the meeting through the links provided.
Thank you.
Okay. Juanita Irazari let me know this morning that she will not be speaking today. So our next three speakers are Sylvia Jones, Hallie Cosada, who has submitted written testimony, which you may find in your packets, and Tavis Stampley. We'll get our next speaker on the line.
Hello, is this Sylvia?
Yes, it is.
Good morning, Ms. Jones. You are live at the Chicago Park District Board Meeting. You may present your comments to the board now.
First, giving honor to God, who is the head of my life. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Minister Sylvia Jones. To Superintendent Michael Kelly and the Board of Commissioners, I have come to you with a heavy heart. As I think about those women that were sexually abused by the Chicago Park District lifeguard employees, I couldn't sit in my position as a private citizen and, most importantly, Chairman of the Board of Directors of Friends of the Parks. I had to say something. I think about an incident that happened years ago to a young woman who was walking home from a friend's home one day. She was grabbed behind, dragged gangway, raped, head bashed in, knocked out, and left for dead in an alley. This person was #metoo. I am not ashamed to tell my story. I share my story because I want other women to come forward and to know I will stand with them and not for, if not for them, with them. I have served on the Friends of the Park Board for almost 11 years, doing the work that relates to our mission, doing the work that I love. However, I don't know whether to be appalled or just downright angry that no one in leadership has come to the aid of these women. At the very least, this matter should have been thoroughly investigated from the very beginning. You all sat silent. You don't get a chance to pick and choose the time to have integrity, to do what's right. The Bible tells us to be right and righteous. Since this story broke, I have learned that there are other women who currently work for the Chicago Park District who have been sexually abused and afraid to come forward. They are afraid of retaliation and losing their livelihoods. But when all is said and done, I do seriously think that leadership is-
30 seconds remaining.
-we do not need someone in the position of Park Board President, Park Board President, Superintendent, or any other exempt position because his father, uncle, brother, or grandfather was there before. The seat should not be inherited. If this should be the case, we are looking at the same rubber-stamp cesspool of political government. The whole park system needs detoxing. We need someone who is more sensitive to the needs of everyone in all communities, who will bring leadership and creativity to our park system.
Please make your closing remarks.
The leadership of Chicago Park District has been male-dominated for years and years and years. It's time for a change. It's time for a new-looking leadership. Let's put look stick on it. It's time for a woman. #metoo.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. We will release you from the call now, and you may rejoin the meeting through the links We'll get our next speaker on the line, Hallie Cosada. Good morning, is this Hallie? Hallie, is that you? You're showing up as muted now. You may need to dial *6 one more time to unmute yourself. There you go. Good morning, is this Hallie?
Yes, this is she, and thank you to that last speaker, too.
Good morning. You are live at the Chicago Park District Board Meeting. You may present your comments to the board now.
The park district statement of exploring additional equipment for swim sanctioned areas is dangerous and rooted in doing the least to control bad PR rather than doing what's right to protect people. The areas in Chicago with the highest drowning rates are not swim sanctioned, but people have direct access, and young people especially, have a pattern of entering unguarded waters. This is not new. The pier where Miguel drowned is not even a swim sanctioned area, but he deserved a chance at survival. The language from the park district is loosely veiled victim blaming and blatantly ignores all the deaths of people who end up in the water unintentionally. It also ignores the bystanders and the witnesses who deserve more options than risking their lives to help or watching someone die. A life ring protects the rescuer, too. This is not the time for incremental change. You have the past three years of intense advocacy for that, and too many people have died in the meantime. There's a lot of existing research in many Great Lakes cities that have life rings. This never had to be hard, but you chose to make us fight for the basics and sacrificed precious lives in the process, and it just hurts. It hurts so much, and we can never get these people back. We need safety equipment on the entirety of our publicly accessible lakefront. If you want data, I've sent you data. There is research about this. When it comes to drowning, prevention is imperative. It depends on the survival of the victim, depends on how long they are in the water. Meanwhile, bystanders make a critical difference in the survival of a drowning victim-
30 seconds remaining.
-and effective performance of a rescue in water without equipment is negligible. This is research. While the use of equipment significantly reduces the loss of lives, furthermore, a bystander may witness a drowning at any time. And again, research, it is unlikely that an altruistically motivated rescuer will resist impulsive attempts to rescue a drowning person, and the solution is to equip them all with the tools for heroic acts. In our task force meetings where Park District was present, Ireland is found to be fairly comparable to Chicago in terms of water safety habits of residents. Yes, and they extensively use life rings. And again, lots of data there with successful rescues from lay responders, and the number of lives saved was significant. It could be significant in Chicago, too, but not if you refuse to protect people.
Thank you so much, Hallie. We'll release you from the call, and you may rejoin the meeting through the links provided. And we'll get our next speaker on the line, Tavis Stampley. Good morning, is this Tavis? You may need to dial *6 to unmute yourself. Tavis, we still have you as muted. You may need to dial *6 one more time to unmute. Okay, Jimmy, please release him from the call, and I'll dial from my phone. Good morning, is this Tavis?
Yes, it is.
Hi, good morning. Yes, we can hear you. You are live at the Chicago Park District Board Meeting. You may present your comments to the board now.
Okay. I would like to, can everyone hear me? I just want to make sure everyone can hear me.
Yes.
Hello? Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I would like to clarify, I'm very honored to accept being the name of Bob Pickin Tracking Field. I'm very honored to be honored to represent him in the naming of the Bob Pickin Tracking Field Park. He's someone that I, with integrity, he has a really great story as being the first African-American to wrestle with a baby. And I was lucky enough to grow up knowing him as a young child, growing up with his kids. I want to accept his honor on behalf of both of his kids, Tori and Todd Pickens, and thank the board for this honor.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Tavis. We'll release you from the call now, and you may rejoin the meeting through the links provided.
Okay, thank you.
Our next three speakers who have signed up to speak are Terry Schilling, who has also submitted supporting documents, which you may find in your packet; David Costelansky, who has also submitted documents, which you may find in your packet; and finally, Al Dubonay, who has also submitted documents, which you may find in your packets. And we'll get Terry on the line. And we'll get Terry on the line. Good morning, is this Terry? You may need to dial star six to unmute yourself. There you go. Good morning, is this Terry?
Yes, this is Terry.
Hi, Terry. You are live at the Chicago Park District Board Meeting. You may present your comments to the board now.
Thank you. As a longtime volunteer steward with the Chicago Park District, I take issue with the new stewardship program policy. My name is Terry Schilling and I'm a steward at the Bill Jarvis Migratory Bird Sanctuary in Lincoln Park and one of the original organizers of the Jarvis Volunteers. I'm currently in my 24th year there. I suspect I'm the longest serving volunteer steward for the district. The site is unique, a woodland surrounded by a seven to eight foot tall chain link fence with lock gates that deny access to the public. When we started, there was no natural areas department and no environmental conservation and engagement department. We formulated our own schedule and policies. Workdays last five hours on selected Saturdays 12 months a year. We're doing 26 this year with at least 27 scheduled in 2022. No other group does this much work. The first policy we implemented was that no one goes inside the fence unless they are engaged in stewardship activities. The next is that no one under 18 is permitted to participate in a workday unless accompanied by a responsible adult. The work we do is strenuous and can be hazardous. There are no walking paths inside any of the fenced areas. We request that people who want to work inside wear leather work gloves, long sleeve shirts, long pants and sturdy shoes to protect themselves. Our problem is the requirement that we allow teenagers to participate without a responsible adult. We are not babysitters and object to having to be responsible for kids that parents want to dump on us. A further insult to me personally is that I will be required to commit to serve for two years. Really? The district is questioning my commitment after 23 years? I'm requesting that the board grant the Jarvis Volunteers an exemption to this policy and to let us continue with our own policies regarding volunteers at our workdays that have served us quite well until now. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Terry. We'll release you from the call at this time and you may rejoin the meeting through the links provided. We'll get our next speaker on the line. It's ringing. Good morning, David. Is this David?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Lake Shore Park and the community. We'd like to commend Pat LeVar, Beth Thomas, Tiffany Sostic and the trades for working with us moving forward the adult exercise equipment area, the first of its kind in Chicago, the complete playground installation. The Alderman and PAC... Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You may need to step away from the device you're watching the meeting on. There's a little bit of an echo.
Is this better?
Yes.
Did you hear any of it?
Yes, you can continue.
The Alderman and PAC are honoring our financial commitments and regularly supplementing the landscaping in Lake Shore and Seneca Parks. Last month, that presented two main areas of concern. Pat LeVar and his team will be coming out to work with the PAC on one of the main significant issues, park accessibility and extensive three problems in both Lake Shore and Seneca Parks. The field, last month I highlighted the serious problem with our field. Major community resources in very bad shape. Maintaining community field actively shared by surrounding schools with over thousands of students, employees, neighbors and visitors is a challenge. The park serves the community four times in number than when it was built. There are over thousands of new high-rise units coming online this year within several blocks.
Thirty seconds remaining.
The field suffered some heavy use and while that was our goal, the field needs to be able to handle that use. Before the replacement irrigation was installed, the Alderman and PAC was sponsored a community with natural resources to discuss the unusable field problem. We are asking today for what was previously promised by the Park District in that meeting. Before field renovation is undertaken, soil samples must be taken.
Please make your closing remarks.
On behalf of Alderman Hopkins, the PAC and community, we are asking that the promised steps be taken so we can ensure a viable plan is in place before any renovation is undertaken. We're dedicated to helping maintain a great park serving a large portion of Chicago use. Alderman Hopkins has asked that I emphatically indicate his support for the Park District to follow the steps promised earlier. Thank you.
Thank you, David. We will release you from the call at this time and you may rejoin the meeting through the links provided. And our last three speakers for the day are Al Daboné, who has submitted supporting documents that you may find in your packets, Susan Avila and Bridget Manietas, who has also submitted written testimony. We'll get our first speaker on the line.
Hi, is this Al?
Awesome. You can hear me, Sarah?
Yes, we can hear you loud and clear. You are live at the board meeting. You may present your comments to the board now.
Thank you so much. My name is Al Daboné, everyone. Chair of the Jackson Park Golf and Community Leadership Council. I'm a former University of Chicago researcher. I attended Chicago Public Schools, the Paul Law School, and I'm a mentor to at-risk and voluntarily challenged youth. Over the last six years, I've attended more than 130 community meetings, Park District forums, PAC meetings, Jackson Park stakeholder residence, Park Sports League membership meetings, where there's overwhelming support for the Jackson Park golf course restoration and its more than $200 million annual economic impact as well as creating jobs, $5 million commitment and college scholarships from WGA and youth development programs to combat youth violence and hopelessness. Moreover, the golf course is more than 120 years old and needs to be brought up to 21st century standard and ADA compliance. Thankfully, we have the outstanding leadership of Park District CEO Mike Kelly, Board President Adis Lavelle and Commissioners King and Illinois golf legend Han Edwards, co-director of the Sineski to make this long overdue restoration with little to no Park District funds a reality. I met with many donors, ready, willing and committed in funds for course restoration. Now that the OPC construction has commenced, we only need the word "go" from our brilliant legacy building Park District leadership team.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Thank you. Those who stand in opposition to restoration of this economic engine of our community and city of Chicago, just asking a few questions. What do they do to help Chicago youth? Do they play golf? Do you live in a community? And what alternative to this $200 million annual economic engine do they propose to replace Jackson Park Golf Restoration Plan? These are important questions. These are challenging times. No one anticipated a pandemic.
Please make your closing remarks.
Yeah, we have this. So I want to take this time to thank every one of you in the board district and all the important board leadership and members that have been a participant in this process over the last six years. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak and may you have a wonderful day.
Thank you, Al. We'll release you from the call at this time and you may rejoin the meeting through the links provided. And we'll...
Thank you, Sarah, and have a wonderful day. Thank you.
And it's ringing. Good morning, is this Susan?
Hello?
Hi, is this Susan?
Yes.
Good morning. You are live at the Chicago Park District Board Meeting. You may present your comments to the board now.
Okay, thank you so much. At a time when the Chicago parks are more than ever needed, this body has supported policies and leadership that have restricted access to this valuable public space and resources. In just this last few months, here are a few examples. Installation of gates in Jackson Park while ignoring the badly needed general maintenance and repair. Closing a major section of Douglas Park for weeks at a time to accommodate private concerts. Installation of Amazon lockers on public land. Ignoring longstanding sexual assault and harassment charges with loss of lifeguards impacting public access to pools. And most recently, standing against the Rogers Park community and refusing to seek collaborative solutions for safer beaches. I am a Hyde Parker and Jackson Park has been for me and many a potent source of comfort and respect. I come here today to specifically ask that the newly placed gates surrounded the wooded island be immediately removed and that this body hold public hearings on the future of Jackson Park. It is disturbing to see the lack of attention put towards just the general upkeep of the park with trash left for days depending with trash left for days depending solely on the kindness of strangers to come pick it up. Yet, resources and money can be found to again construct gates and barriers to our public land. The gates do not make our parks safer, not protect us from graffiti. You can change this course today. This body has direct control over Superintendent Kelly. Direct the leadership of the Park District to hold hearings, remove the gates in Jackson Park and work with our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. We'll release you from the call at this time and you may rejoin the meeting through the links provided. And we'll get our final speaker on the line. Bridget Manietas. Good morning, is this Bridget? Bridget, you may need to dial star six to unmute yourself. There you go. Is this Bridget? Good morning, is this Bridget on the line?
This is Bridget.
Hi, good morning. You are live at the Chicago Park District Board Meeting. You may present your comments to the board now.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Bridget Manietas and I'm a resident of Hyde Park and an avid park user. During the last week of August, Northside residents celebrated the completion of the 312 River Run while Southsiders agreed with gates resurrected overnight to close off Wood Island from dusk to dawn. In Jackson Park, the Clarence Darrow Bridge has been closed for more than six years. A new bridge was supposed to be completed in 2019, but we are still waiting. However, I did notice that the underbridge for the 312 River Run can be completed in less time than that, the new bridge over the river at Irving Park could be built. Further, two historic comfort stations in Jackson Park have been intentionally neglected to the point of near collapse. However, the Park District has the funds overnight to lock off Wood Island to stop insinuated quote unquote criminal activity. In addition to being inconvenient and insulting to the users of the parks, the gates are not the most efficient way to prevent quote unquote criminal activity. There are many more creative options to prevent motorcycles and motor vehicles that do not prevent pedestrians and other users of the park. However, what the Park District is showing residents of the South Side says not a citywide funding issue, but a deliberate refusal to fund Southside parks. There's money for new parks on the North Side and money for gates to keep Southsiders out of the park, but the Park District doesn't care enough to spend money on the most basic repairs for Jackson Park. If the Chicago Park District cares about all their constituents, they need to prove their commitment to reversing decades of inequitable investment in their facilities. A good place to start is by removing the gates on Wood Island and making the needed infrastructure improvements in Jackson Park.
Thirty seconds remaining.
I'm done.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Bridget. We'll release you from the call at this time and you may rejoin the meeting through the links provided. That was our final speaker. Please let the record reflect that we have also received written testimony from Dean Magdalene, Reagan Burke, Andy Carter, Gary Oswald, Sarah Hayman and Laura Sabransky, which you can find in your board packets.
Mike, can you or somebody on your staff speak to this Jackson Park security issue? Because I have had a number of conversations with Alderman about some of the concerns there.
This is not a new issue. We've been asked for years to develop security, gates, more vigilance on the wooded island. And that's really what we're talking about here right now. As far as the Darrow Bridge and the underbridge connections, that's a C dot matter. I wish I had the money and resources to do the Darrow Bridge. That's not under our purview. Neither was the other bridge. As far as the gates go, I mean, I don't know how to put it any other way, but you know, the wooded island has had criminal activity at night, after hours. There's been plenty written about it in the Hyde Park Herald. But we were hesitant for years to do anything about it as far as gates because we knew folks would be upset that there was perceived restricted access. So this is not something we took lightly. We certainly wouldn't do anything like this without the full support of Alderman Harrison, who obviously is very vigilant and very active in what we do in Jackson Park. She did endorse this. So what ended up happening was there's one way in and one way out to the wooded island. And we've installed gates that we intend to close at night and open in the mornings, essentially to restrict access to the wooded island when it's dark. We have not locked the gates yet. We've not closed the gates yet. I'm not even sure, Pat can correct me, I'm not even sure if we're done with the installation of the gates. I know there's people that feel strongly against it. There's a lot of people that feel strongly for it. The reality is, it is no place for children. It is no place for folks after dark. It's just not. I've seen it with my own eyes and so has my staff. But like I said, we haven't locked the gates yet. We have installed them. We have every intent to lock them. But you know, I know people are upset, but it's... You can't tell me that there's not bad activity going on there after hours in the dark. That's why we installed them and we installed them at the request of the community. You heard Louise McCurry, the head of the PAC, and Alderman Harrison supports this.
President Lavelle, could someone comment on investment in parks on the South Side over the past five or 10 years?
I could... I'm just grabbing a piece of paper. I was gonna talk about Laird. But so we're gonna pretend this isn't about Laird. But you know, we've acquired almost 1,200 acres of parkland. Mostly that was on the South Side. We spent hundreds of millions of dollars on the South Side, whether you talk about shoreline redevelopment, investment in the New Harbor at 35th First Street, river development on the South Side at Ping Tom and at Park 571. We just cut a ribbon on the $56 million Gate League Track and Field. We just finished, you know, we're in the midst of just starting our investment in Jackson Park. It's part of the framework plan that we went through that you're gonna see improvements to the dog friendly area. Hopefully, one day the golf course, the Iowa Building. It's still very much our intent to build a new field house, but we need help from the community to raise those funds. We've built new field houses at Jesse Owens at 95th Street, Ellis, which is in far from Jackson Park, HAZ, which is on the Near West Side, investments at La Vita and Paul Masano, the 606 Investments. I mean, look, I can go on and on. We've invested hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars on the South and West Side. I am a lifelong Southsider. I can assure the public, we do not every day at the Chicago Park District worry about just the North Side or just Lincoln Park, despite the popular argument that that's all we care about. That is absolutely not how we operate. It is not. We go to communities. We want what they want. We're in the park business. We want the best park we can provide and we want it fast, usually because people want that quality of life improvement at a time that their children can enjoy it. And we know that window closes. Any of us who have children or nieces or nephews or grandkids, we know it's a quick window. But we have very, very limited resources. Very. We have $30 million a year, anybody who's ever come to my budget hearing, and divided by 50 words, that's $600,000 a year. That's one playground. So every year we set a goal that that $30 million... So every year, we set a goal that that $30 million will turn into $100 million. Some years, we're successful, some years, we fall short. But we have to figure out how to leverage that $30 million into more money to get these things done. It doesn't happen overnight. It's not easy. We do a lot of it without federal support, shoreline not included. It's TIF money. It's Aldermanic support. It's state support. It's private dollars. This work is not easy. People want to help us, but we have to hustle for the money. I've said this, I've been here, what, 18 years? There are plenty of people that can point and say, that's a problem, and that's a problem, and that's a problem. Great. I have over $2 billion in capital deficit right now, $2 billion to maintain our assets. Do you know how much money the Park District got in federal relief? Zero. Zero. So we're doing the best we can. We always need help.
Yeah, but I think that there's, obviously, the lack of resources is an issue, but in terms of where those resources are spent, the evidence of new facilities across the city is just not consistent with the last speaker, nor with some other speakers, and that's demonstrable facts that you can lay out for people, Mike. So look forward to you doing that more often. Thank you.
Yep.
The idea, really, that we would not be in favor of equitable distribution of resources all across the city is really one that the evidence does not support.
Exactly. It flies in the face of the evidence of where the new parks are.
I too am a Southsider, a lifelong Southsider. So to think that I, as a Southsider, and Mike Kelly, as a Southsider, would sit here and allow the resources not to go into our communities equitably just doesn't make sense.
No, and it's a nice bridge. It's a nice bridge into, in a moment, when we rename the track and field for Bob Pickens. Because Bob Pickens, God rest his soul, when he was Vice President, walked into my office, completely filled my doorway, as anybody who knew Bob could do, and demanded that Jackson Park, a map of Jackson Park be put in front of me so every day I could look at Jackson Park and think about what improvements we can make at Jackson Park. And that was right on the heels of us pulling off the impossible, which was a brand new field house at Jesse Owens, which everybody told us would never happen. Beautiful park with a little field house across the street from CBS, and that was Bob's mission. And we got that done. Took a lot of help. At the time, I think it was Senator Colvin, Marlo Colvin, helped us. And two weeks later, Bob said, all right, our next project is Jackson Park. And I'm very proud of what we've accomplished in Jackson Park. I know we got a lot more to do. We have Washington Park Framework Plan that's coming as well. So there's plenty of work necessary in the parks to get done what needs to be done. But you know what? We know what we're doing, we know how to work those resources, and we do need help. And we need help together. So I think, is Bob first? That would be a nice tee up for Bob.
Under new business from the Director of Planning and Construction, we have a request to officially name the Jackson Park Turf and Track Field in honor of Bob Pickens. Heather Gleason is gonna address that to the board, please.
Thank you. Good afternoon, President Lavelle, Superintendent Kelly, and members of the board. My name is Heather Gleason, Director of Planning and Construction. And as Mike mentioned, it is recommended that we enter an order authorizing the General Superintendent or his designee to officially name the Jackson Park Turf and Track Field in honor of Bob Pickens. If you could go to the next slide, please. This just shows you briefly where Jackson Park is located in the Woodlawn Community in the Fifth Ward. Next slide. And then we just wanted to show within this massive 500 acre park where this new track and field is located. It's east of Stony Island Avenue, west of Hayes, between 62nd and 63rd Street. And as we were just discussing, this is actually a new image of the turf field that was recently installed. The project is actually further along than this. We now have the rubber surfacing down, it is in its cure period, and we're really in the final stretches of completing this brand new track and field at this location for the community. As a reminder, this new track and field was funded by the Obama Foundation as the previous field was in the footprint of the Presidential Center. And we brought this proposed naming for Bob Pickens to our July Board Meeting to open our 45-day comment period, which has now passed. So we're looking forward to completing this hopefully in the next couple of weeks so we can have an official celebration. Next slide, please. And as Mike was mentioning, this is Bob Pickens. He was born in 1943 and grew up in Illinois. He sadly passed away on April 12, 2018 at the age of 75. Mr. Pickens attended high school in Evanston where Coach Elias George mentored him and introduced him to wrestling. While attending Evanston Township High School, he was an all-state offensive tackle in football, the 1961 heavyweight state champion in wrestling, and the 1961 suburban shot put in Discus Champion. After enrolling at the University of Wisconsin, Bob Pickens was selected as the 1963 preseason All-American and Big Ten Lineman of the Year during his sophomore term. In 1964, Bob Pickens was selected for the Greco-Roman Wrestling Team representing the United States at the Olympics in Tokyo, Japan. Pickens was the first African-American wrestler to compete. He placed sixth in the world. In 1965, Pickens then transferred to the University of Nebraska where he was selected as an All-American candidate, received all Big Eight Offensive Tackle honors in football, and finished second in the National AAU Wrestling Tournament Heavyweight Division. He also earned his Bachelor of Science degree in Business Administration. Bob Pickens was drafted into the NFL and played offensive tackle for his beloved Chicago Bears from 1967 to 1969. Following his three years with the Bears, he spent a year playing for the Edmonton Eskimos in the Canadian Football League, and this illustrious sports career as an athlete resumed when Pickens served as a football official for the Big Ten from 1976 to 1989. He worked such games as Big Ten Championships, the Liberty Bowl, the Peach Bowl, and the Rose Bowl. Pickens also served as National Steering Committee President of the NFL's Players Association and the President of the NFL Retired Players Association in the Chicago Chapter. Pickens also served a number of years on the USA Wrestling Diversity Committee, helping the organization to expand opportunities within the sport and develop programs that were more inclusive. Bob Pickens had an extensive business career, but made time for others. He volunteered for numerous community and civic organizations such as the Boys and Girls Club of America, the Better Boys Foundation, the Michael F. Sheehan Youth Foundation, and Boundless Playgrounds for Children with Special Needs. He has been honored extensively, most notably with the induction into the History Makers Athletic Hall of Fame and the Chicagoland Sports Hall of Fame. In 2000, Bob Pickens joined the Park District Board as Commissioner, and in 2005 was elected Vice President of the Board. In his role on the Park District Board, he was a strong advocate for a number of causes such as the inclusion of minority and women-owned firms in the district's procurement of goods and services, the creation of an art conservation program to introduce young people to this field as a possible career choice, naming the new field house in Rogers Park after Willie White, an outstanding Chicago athlete and fellow Olympian, and the development of the new field house at Jesse Owens Park, also after a fellow Olympian. He championed the design of accessible playgrounds to serve all the children of Chicago equally as well as sports and programming for those served through the district's special recreation program. Vice President Pickens also enjoyed engaging in dialogue with citizens who came to address the board on a variety of topics. Bob Pickens' charity work was about mentoring and giving opportunities to children who might not always have them. During the 45-day comment period, we received 11 comments in favor of this naming proposal and none against. We also received a letter of support from older woman Leslie Harrison in support of this proposal. As you heard from Mr. Stampley, Bob Pickens was a cherished member of his family as well as a stalwart of our Chicago community. At this time, we recommend moving forward with the final naming proposal, and I'm happy to take your questions.
Are there questions or concerns? Then may I call for a motion?
So moved.
Second. Secretary, please take a roll call on the matter, a roll call for the adoption of this matter.
Absolutely. Commissioner Coldak?
Aye. Ten times over, aye.
Okay, Commissioner Edwards?
Aye.
Commissioner Netski?
Aye.
And President Lavelle?
Aye. With great pleasure.
The motion carried and the matter is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. We'll keep everyone in the loop when we do an official ribbon cutting on the event, both the board and obviously the public that's listening in.
Thank you. I had the pleasure of serving with Mr. Pickens, and it was an honor and a privilege. The motion carries, the matter is adopted. So next, from the Chief Financial Officer, adoption of the 2021 Annual Tax Levy Ordinance, Steve Lux will address the board.
Good afternoon, President Lavelle, word to Commissioners and Superintendent and CEO Kelly. For the record, my name is Steve Lux, and I'm the Chief Financial Officer of the Chicago Park District. I'm here before you today to request approval of the 2021 Tax Levy Ordinance in the amount of $298.4 million. This request is made annually and is required by state statute, and it's administrative in nature as the board has already approved the 2021 tax levy as part of the 2021 Annual Appropriation Ordinance back in December of 2020. The ordinance before you today approximates the 2021 budget. Once approved, the ordinance will then be filed with the Cook and DuPage County Clerk's Offices. Are there any questions?
If not, may I have a motion? Is there? Okay, a second? They have a second?
Do we have a second?
Did I motion?
Yes, I have Commissioner Netski.
Second.
Motion?
Second.
Thank you, Donna. All right. Will the Secretary please take a roll call for the adoption of this matter?
Absolutely. Commissioner Coldak?
Aye.
Commissioner Edwards?
Aye.
Commissioner Netski?
Aye.
And President Lavelle?
Aye.
Motion carried and the matter is adopted.
Thank you. Next, from the Chief Financial Officer, adoption of an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed $120 million in general obligation limited tax park bonds of 2021 in one or more series. Mr. Lux?
Thank you, President. And if it pleases the board, I'd like to take the three ordinances altogether as this is all part of our last financing transaction of the year.
Please do.
Thank you.
So before you today is a request to approve three ordinances authorized to the district to issue up to $182 million in bonds. These ordinances represent the last financing of the year and encompasses a combination of the issuance of bonds for our capital plan and refunding of certain other bonds. The first ordinance requests approval to issue up to $50 million of limited tax bonds for funding the capital plan under the 2021 Series B Bonds. A BINA hearing was held at the July meeting, and a notice to the public was published in the Sun Times. The proceeds will complete the funding of the 2019 Capital Plan, the 2020 Capital Plan, and a significant portion of the 2021 Capital Plan. In addition, the first ordinance requests the approval to issue up to $70 million in limited tax refunding bonds under the Series 20.
To exceed $50 million general obligation unlimited tax refunding bonds of 2021. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And no objection.
All right, thank you. And the last matter, the last bond issue for $12 million. Is there an objection to applying the last favorable roll call vote to this matter?
Okay. Hearing non. The motion carried and the matter is adopted.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, President Lavelle.
All right. At this time, we will go in closed session to consider various matters pursuant to the Illinois Open Meetings Act appropriately discussed in closed session. There'll be a discussion of an appointment pursuant to 5 Illinois CS 120, Section 2, Subsection C1. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against? Motion carries, the meeting is now in executive session. ...in session to discuss an appointment pursuant to 5 Illinois CS 120, Section 2, Subsection C1, and had the following matter of new business. The Commissioners discussed the appointment of Sarah Gelder as Secretary of the Board of Commissioners of the Chicago Park District. Secretary Pro Tim, is there a motion to approve this appointment?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great. Will the Secretary please take a roll call for, for the adoption of this matter?
Absolutely. Commissioner Coldak?
Aye.
Commissioner Edwards?
Aye.
Commissioner Netski?
Aye.
And President Lavelle?
Aye.
Motion carried and the appointment is adopted. Thank you.
Congratulations, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the board meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And for the last time, I second.
Thank you, Laird, for all that you've done for the Chicago Park District. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. This meeting is now...